Heavenly Father, we come before you. We ask that you guide our hands and our cloths. Point us in the right directions. Ask you to be with those that can't be with us today for illness or whatever reason that they can't be with us. Touch those that need your healing hands. Protect those that protect us and that take care of us each and every day throughout the county and throughout the state and country. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I honor Texas's flag. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution, Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
They do go pretty smoothly. Okay, at this time, any person with business before the court not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the court. No formal action can be taken on these items at this meeting. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. Court, to discuss and consider any precinct projects scheduling staff.
I absolutely agree. It's come up. Do mix and park.
Yeah.
And there's a poly water. And it's still where it's sat inside of the pond. But it's concrete in the bottom. At the side, we're putting ten and six close to that two fifty five. We started again. I want y'all to prove the invisible. He's got about forty eight inches, twenty five long color. That's what we're going to do. But I want y'all to prove it. It is private property. But it's kind of like a waterway out in the canyon. See, it has all the water. So, I'm in just thoughts.
All the water from the park goes there too?
Yes, well, lots of good crusts called that.
Well, yeah.
Good deal.
But it keeps it so, not so much. I'm not sure we can do that legally. I mean, right there's our county attorney who just need to...
If the court finds that it serves a public purpose, so if it's going to stop the erosion from the parks, it'll slow the water flow down, et cetera. You know, if that's a private individual that serves a public purpose and the court makes that finding, then you can, but you have to find that it serves a public purpose, not a private purpose. Just like, you know, when you got folks with the vardishes out the county where it's coming out of their fields and you go in and adjust those a little bit, get landowner consent.
Yes.
To, to keep it from eroding the roads. Same thing as that culvert right there, that waterway, so, but that's a court decision. Make that finding.
That sounds good. And of course, we take this thing for no limits agenda, but...
Yeah, who does?
Okay.
Well, it's up.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, as long as it is legal to do it, I'm, I'm with you.
Yeah, because like, far as I said, he's gonna buy.
Yeah.
And we're still putting it in.
Yes.
Anything else? Court, to discuss and consider phone system from Visual Edge. We had some homework to reach out to, some others, others that had the system. Don't have any opportunity to figure out?
I did, it didn't get hold. One second to read. Her words were, I answer it every day, I use it every day, that's all I got. So, she didn't say, you have any bad news? Nothing else, call me back soon.
Okay. What do you want to do with this, Sam?
I don't know, it's a table until we have a chance to do a little research on it.
Get some more contacts, okay. We'll bring it back on the next panel, hopefully we'll get something, an answer by then. Because I know that our phone systems are giving people grief.
Absolutely.
The first phase of doggo.
When are we gonna have a new phone system? How long is this gonna take?
It's horrible. We can't, we can't take payments over the phone, we can't do anything. Everybody's, you're, you're breaking up. We call back on our cell phones. And it's horrible.
I had to talk to bank this morning on my cell phone because I couldn't get through on the office.
We get like, I'm not kidding you, fifty calls a day that there is nobody there. And we get this one, it shows up as medical assistance. Nothing, it rings three times and then quits. We get way more phone calls like that than we did people front end.
Doing this feel back to the standard landline. Where you figured out, like, we were down.
At this point, I'm all for it. I mean, something's gotta be done, quick.
It'll cost you more to do that.
Yeah, it worked.
This is something that's not just happened recently. And the cost to us is going to be noticeable because they're gonna furnish all the equipment, right? And I've heard this, the trouble that we've been having with phones forever, where those that have to have those phones working properly. And I would suggest that we go ahead and, and go forward. We don't have any better offers on the table, no one else has come forward. The system we have does not work. And I would make a motion that we go ahead and allow these people to bring their phone system in. If this doesn't work, it didn't cost us a whole lot of money. And there's got to be some guarantees in there.
There, yeah.
That it is going to work as they have said it would. And if it doesn't, we look for another one.
It couldn't be yours.
We've got to get to where we're going. And we can't get there waiting.
True, and I agree with you. Except when we do this, I want some guarantees from somebody.
Never be in writings in...
Mostly we had a...
My debt.
Well, it's contacting them. You, they can't give you an answer, they won't give you an answer. Or it's, it's a fight to get any kind of customer service from them. John, any thoughts on, on the customer service, the ability to get help from this company?
Yeah, I'm with you.
You, you can stay there if you like, either way.
Right. Yeah, so, on the phone system, I would love to tell you that our, I'm talking about the hardware, they actually, my competitors, they're all pretty much the same. So, what it really does boil down to is service. And that is the one area where I have no issue going to bat for our service. Number one, everything is internal. When you call to get service from us, it's not gonna be a third-party vendor that we brought in from the outside. It's not gonna be offshore. You're gonna be talking to a badge Visual Edge IT employee. So, we have a whole, a lot of companies, as they do phones, it's just an add-on to their service. And so, maybe they go out and do IT and they just want to bring on phones to make it more sticky once they get into a client. We have a whole phone department within Visual Edge IT, that is all it is, is phones. So, from, from start to finish, onboarding, we'll have two of our techs come out here and they're gonna go to all twelve locations here. Check each one of them before the phones come in, make sure your, your bandwidth, your internet is good. And then, service, like I said last week, most places you call in for service, you have to go to like a level one help person. And then, if they can't answer your questions, then you get moved on to someone with a little more knowledge. With ours, you call in, there's a dispatcher, and if it's a level two or a level three problem, you're going directly to that person. You're not gonna have to go through your level one person and do that song and dance the whole time. They're gonna send you to where you go, so...
I may add just one thing, I mean, local presence, at the end of the day, yes, I'm not phones, yes, I'm not intermedia, so to speak, the company that's gonna be taking care of the service issues. I'm a local representation of Visual Edge IT and the company that's gonna be handling the service, service of this, so, along with John. So, you'll have almost two people to hold their feet to the fire say some issues arise. And you look me in the eyes, so... We're gonna go back for you guys.
I can't say both of them are responsive. Lane, when we need something, these giant spot, and I appreciate that.
When I take that back, my title.
Dan, we are testing the internet to make sure it can hold the phone system, right? Before we jump into this.
Yeah, it's part of the process before we...
But it would be your check in if I didn't put it on well.
Yeah, so, what, what it's called quality of service. And you'll just look at your internet like a tube coming in. Quality of service, we're gonna make sure that we're able to say, hey, this third of the internet bandwidth goes to the phone. So, not that anyone at the county would do this, but the end of the day, when everyone starts jumping on Facebook and YouTube and all those things, that block of internet is still just for the phone system. And so, yes...
That Jeremy's been working on as well as getting switches, had a hard time finding switches. To put it all, the phone system on one particular, particular part of that.
Phil Burke situation.
And thi- this phone system does come with a, it's financially backed, that if it is an issue that is caused by us, they will pay the county or credit you to your bill for that downtime.
Well, it's like a terrorist motion, man, because we got their feet to the fire right now. Everybody heard it.
And they've got our meeting, that's how many people they have.
All right. He did. Sean seconded it, so, all his labor. All right.
Ring it.
Sign this when it gets started.
I have a new one. Because that one has the old price on it.
Okay, that one has the new lower price.
Correct.
Yes, sir.
And I have...
I had to say lower because didn't want it to be hired.
Oh, it went up a grand on the... And I spoke, was it with you at EMS? And we will be able to cover the EMS.
Okay.
So, if they need to call after hours.
Okay.
So, twenty-four seven, that was another...
That was another question.
Big concern. And so, the, the rest of the county will be just regular business hours, but EMS will be...
Okay.
So, that's baked in the price of it?
Yes, that, that's not thinking... This null or anything, so... Is that excluding office?
Excluding, yes, sir.
Okay.
And if it doesn't work, we'll just do it for sure.
All right, so... Yeah, I'm gonna move around with that before we get into the real investment zone, because we're gonna have to leave in a while. Get some of these things before we do that. But we can start at A, let's consider the bids on, did we have in, I guess we had the bids on the vans that some are selling. I didn't hear anything. I just found out I'm gonna have my fourth grandson.
Congratulations.
Found out that it's a boy. We were having another one, we just didn't know if it was for a girl. All right, so, I'm waiting on that, let's discuss and consider the proposal from Todd or Technologies. We have a copy of this. As you know, there were lots of promises made by iDocket that we're not able to meet those promises and we're still having major issues, especially with connecting back and forth. Tyler, as soon as proposal, they would be totally cloud-based. Two of them are free, county clerk and county, I'm sorry, district clerk, those would be free. Initial cost, and you can spread it out over five payments through twenty twenty-three. From quarter three, twenty twenty-two to quarter three of twenty twenty-three, you can spread those payments out with a total of three hundred and four thousand dollars to get into. But it's, annual fees is eighty-five thousand. This is a system that makes our whole criminal justice system work. Or stay together. And it is not working with iDocket. We have certain things that we have out, and you, if you need testimonials from any of the... I'm sure they're willing to give, to tell you what they've told me over the last little bit.
Well, I can tell you that Todd or Technologies hasn't been the best either, but...
Yeah, their customer service isn't great, but they, they're the only showing town, other than the I-Docket. Right. And it's not working. It, it's, it's not working, it's not working at all, really. I mean...
And also, as far as we deal with them, their customers, iDocket's customer service has significantly gone downhill since we started this. I can call them for an issue on Friday afternoon and I'll maybe hear back from them the ne- the next Wednesday. And that's if I include Amelia, the one that oversees the whole project.
Tyler has been a lot of the same. I had to get involved several times with different departments to get them to even come back and say anything. And where we're given assistance that were local for us, and that changed time after time after time after time. And they're great stock, if you want to own a great stock, Todd or Technologies is one y'all buy. It's good, but their customer service is an L. But so is now iDocket.
Well, iDocket is not even an L.
It's easy.
They've had a lot of staff turnover as well, who don't understand criminal justice system and how it works. There was a time, just what, a couple of weeks ago, Trey called me. Their iDocket system went down, they couldn't get a hold of anybody, Trey tried and then called me and we got a hold of Amelia. They finally had, we had to go that route to be able to get anybody to help us.
That's, that's...
And, you know, their twenty-four hour number is not twenty-four hour, it's eight-five. And that doesn't work for...
The way we hit the deal with that, sure, you remember was, it was the deal for Tyler. That's why we went with iDocket.
And part of the reason, yeah, that was it, we were looking at having to replace all those servers for three hundred thousand dollars. There will be no more servers. It will be all cloud-based, and that's...
Four years.
Yeah.
That was pretty much the deal for the new servers.
Right.
Comes in out, iDocket. So, I mean, it's costing county money for JP's offices for... And, you know, they don't work, I know some issues where it depends on, but they always get turned loose because they're not the...
A, warrants, the numbers get, numbers and titles get changed by the time they get over to the sheriff's department system. With Tyler, it just automatically goes over. It's, it's the same system, so it's there.
Right, right. I hope it creates a new case, everything moves, if I'm not mistaken. So, y'all have what, five chances by the time you get to a point?
Yeah.
Wow.
That's, that's nuts.
You know, they've been working on this for years and years, because I've talked to iDocket for at least ten years. They kept telling me, we're not there, but we're getting there. And at that time, we, we spent probably tens of thousands of dollars with CTSI Peer Solutions and Lava. We had to prove to Todd or Technologies that the problems that we were having with their system was their fault. And CTSI did that for us. And we don't use CTSI that much anymore, we had a very narrow contract with them at this time. And I just hope that Tyler got their stuff together on this thing and, like I said, it's either or, and the or is not working. So, we've got to go back to something that's not worked very well in the past, for a lot of departments, for some departments it worked relatively well. For other departments, you put in information, they guaranteed it to flow to the next place, it flowed to the next place with a totally different name, like in the district clerk's office. Totally different name address, everything. I mean, spent months on end, getting it to work for sure account. And it's, we don't have a lot of choice though. I mean, I, I think this is something that's just gotta be done because the problem that we're having with the only other solution, so, I make a motion that we accept Todd or Technologies bid estimate, whatever, to be able to get something that will work hopefully. And deal with it in the future. Hopefully, there'll be somebody that actually comes in with a solution in, in time. Technology is just difficult. And allow the judge to sign it.
Thank you. You should, we're getting an email that's adopted signed from OCA. All right, court, to discuss and consider modifications to the right-of-way use and indemnification agreement. And we did not get any bids for the... The right-of-way use and indemnification agreement does not include underground voltage lines? And so, we're looking at including those in this specifically for the battery storage, correct, up there?
Actually, it's for the solar, lumina two.
Lumina two, that's right, yeah.
There's one road, eleven oh five, that they're lead crossing under, and they were confused whenever I showed them the permit because it only talks about gas and oil lines. And so, called On Court, and they sent some information, also talked to Brown County. They have one that's already for that, and so, the county attorney was then able to come up with some language, or he's working on language, to put in there to satisfy that requirement.
Terry, I looked at Brown County, I looked at a little bit what On Court said. I didn't see any specific casing requirements for how open some electrical would be anywhere.
I did not.
Anything that said, it looks like there's a bare wire being buried out, it's just gonna have very thick insulation.
Yeah.
So, it's up to the court what y'all want to do, whether you want to require casings for electrical or what you don't, whether you just want to go about thirty-six inch depth below grade on the barbed. I didn't, I don't know that I had any real suggestions other than depth on those, because I didn't see anything from any other jurisdiction or electric provider that said that those would be case.
I, I don't see that, that problem either. And, and talking to On Court, they, even under FM's and US highways, it's three foot. And the only suggestion I would have for all of us is that we make sure we clean those ditches prior to them installing that line. Because what we've had in the past, especially with phone lines, is that we, the ditch is silted in because we had a big rain, we hadn't gotten to it yet, hadn't cleaned it out. They're, they don't put it twenty-four inches to begin with. But we wind up laying those lines out because, or even water lines that we've had trouble with. Because they put it at a certain depth below where that was at the time. And so, we, if we clean them first, then they're three foot below our lowest level. And so, as long as we do that, we'll be good.
So, what are, what are y'all thoughts on the thirty-six inch depth that's already in our right-of-way use agreement?
Yeah, I have no problem with it whatsoever.
Then, and so, the changes that the solar farm requested that they sent, I didn't have any real issues with any of those. The casing only applies, only applies to pipelines carrying pressurized, et cetera. I think as long as they get it thirty-six inches or lower, I don't see any real issues with our current road, uh, right-of-way.
Except for that language of, of electrical lines.
Well, I don't even know that it matters, but by definition, it only, it only applied, all other lines are thirty-six.
Okay.
Case lines only apply to pressurized lines, so...
You didn't see any language that really needed to be added?
No, we can, we could put all other, including electrical, and it'd be thirty-six inches, but that's just redundant.
Yeah, no, that's fine.
But we, we could if we want to.
If you're happy with it, I am.
Yeah, I think...
Thank you.
As long as it says all crossings, that includes all crossings.
That's why we let you look at it. Because we know you're gonna get us right.
Yeah, especially we changed that number to, to say any line shall be installed, if we put any line or crossing in ten, thirty-six inch depth, I think that gets us really to be...
With those changes, I've made motion that we accept the permit as presented.
Court, to discuss and consider upgrade of older cardiac monitors purchasing ARCA funds or EMS or whatever. These cardiac monitors. Current cardiac monitors are twenty fifteen monitors. We got two bids, our quotes, sorry, gotta be careful. Inferno and Azol. So, I'm just asking the court to, for funds associated with a trade-in. So, be a trade-in on the monitors that we currently have. There's several ways we can do it, we can do it one year, we can do it all at once. The price quotes that we're looking at are about a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand. But the trade-ins will drop it down below a hundred and fifty, depending on how many, one hundred or two trade. We currently have money in ARCA funds and as well as money in text class funds. So, there's no, no text, or no, no general funds or...
What's your suggestion? As, as far as replacing one a year or all at once, I mean, what's the...
Well, what we'll do, and both, all these cardiac monitors, companies work the same, or they give you, say we purchase five, I'll give you all five, and you just pay that, all that. Either pay it all at once, or you pay it all at once. So, it's not, it doesn't really matter, we're gonna get all at once anyway. But we have the money in account in both accounts.
And once you get these monitors, I assume that you will be going ahead and, and getting everybody instructions of how to do it or having a class?
Oh, yeah, yeah. So, you don't ever implement any medical equipment without proper training?
Yeah, and so, that training has been for quite a while ago that we had already, and some of us, we got new people, so, we can, if you can train us all again.
Oh, the AEDs?
Uh-huh.
That's not what I'm talking about, I'm talking about full-blank...
Oh, the monitors for, yeah, for your EMS.
Yeah, AEDs are so good.
Yeah.
All the AEDs are gonna come here, good.
So, that's what we need, that's what we need instructions.
These are the five high-dollar cardiac monitors that we put on every patient every day, on every call.
Okay.
Make different delays, rate pays. Monitor, so...
I make those.
I just need a direction of which account? Right. And how much? And... Yeah, and so, in our ARCA committee meeting, we've talked about half name for, for what's EMS, is that right? So, we're still waiting to get the second half of that. That should be middle of this month, we've gotten any emails saying that it's coming. But do we want to take it out of ARCA funds or EMS? So, we're gonna make a presentation to the commissioner's court on, after we get the funds, what the committee believes it should be on that time.
What you're gonna do, what you're gonna do is text class.
We're getting a lot of direction, I think, from most funds, but we got to say what that'll be. And cardiac monitors are really, we pushing it, but we can get first here.
I make a motion to add, there's power to use program, use text class things, we're posting, we're pretty great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Court discussing consider three policies and procedure documents. So these were submitted by Angela. Fixed asset policy, purchasing part policy and procedures, person policy and procedures manual. Have you all had a chance to read all three of them?
These are actually exactly what we've always been doing or just been writing.
No doubt for me, I appreciate putting all this together. I don't think that it needs to be in a policy that we actually adopt in the commissioner's court. I think that everybody, it's a good instruction manual. I think that it's something that everybody needs to know. If you do have a question about purchasing or any of the other fixed asset, whatever, Angela or county attorneys there, all of this that's in those policies is actually, or a lot of it, is actually in the statutes. And she, she looks, she puts those in there for people. So I think it's great for people to be able to look at and see those if that's what you need to do. Otherwise, I think we just follow the law. The law changes all the time. You can, and as I did this morning, I Googled county person statutes, state of Texas. Pops up on your phone, you read those statutes, you stay within those limits. I think that it's good for people to be able to read those, understand where Angela's coming from. As far as making a policy, I think that the personnel policies that we have are, are a big read. And to add more to that is, law is redundant. Talking about ethical issues, conflict of interest, any elected official has to sign a conflict of interest with the county clerk if they have any of those. So I think it's just a rehearsing of what the laws are. And those laws are easy to find. You can talk to your county attorney, talk to your auditor, you can talk to the TAC, Texas State counties. They have all those laws on your website for you to read. There are attorneys down there by the gods that you can talk to if the county attorney isn't available. If you do something that's a misdemeanor, it's not going to be the auditor that's going to take you to court. It's going to be that county attorney. So you want to make sure that you understand his position in that. And it's just like my son that's a pharmacist. He has a family of pharmacists around him that he calls and talks to whenever he's unsure. Or as our county attorney does, he looks at case law. If there's no case law, then you get your peers' opinions and you make a decision from that. It's what the law's trying to say because they are very difficult to understand. A lot of people think, oh, I read it in one place, look, the government code, so the government code doesn't matter, well, it does. They all matter, and he's trained in that. And so I've used him from the day one, and he just told me, looked me right in the eye and he'd tell you the same thing. You can talk to him. If I give you my opinion and then you don't follow, don't come back. And I'm blaming him. But if you get in trouble, you do something that you shouldn't do, he'll be the one that will be taking you to court and you will be fined or put out of office or whatever. So give his opinion, make sure it's right. According to him, I've talked to attorneys who said to me, if the county attorney tells you something, it's as good as an opinion from the attorney general for your county. So let's use him and let's have less reading.
I would like to explain though why these are being presented. One, in section one one two of the local government code, it states that I have authority to propose in regulations for purchasing and all this, which we've had, like I said, all along. But with January coming up, I mean, I know it's still a little bit ways, but I'm trying to prepare ahead of time. We have newly elected officials come in and have new department heads. When they come to my office and ask questions, I don't remember the whole, I mean, you're right, the same. There's a lot of information. So with this, I can give it, this presenting it to the court for y'all's approval was a courtesy thing for, that the court, everybody would know, these are our purchasing policies and procedures. We've also had questions when something's been denied or questioned or whatever in our offices. Well, where's the policy that states that? So here's the policy. Also fixed assets, there's been a lot changed in fixed assets. We used to track everything, like everything, a lock box, twenty-seven dollars was on the fixed asset. Now we only track every, everything over five thousand. So there are some, there's quite a bit of changes in fixed assets. That is the reason why we presented it also on the list, or they have recommended that we provide these and present them to the court for approval. That's why.
And I think that everybody should get them. And to where it's statute, but they should follow them, they have to follow them. But other than that, instead of approving it as a policy, just hand the material to them, that's what we have elected officials and department heads for, is to make sure that they're following those procedures as the law provides. And that's the only thing, I think, I think everybody should have a copy. But to put it in there and say, this is the way you will do it, other than statute, I just, I think it's beyond what we need to do.
Well, it's prepared to approve of the just, we don't approve it. That leaves a loophole for somebody that does forever, no matter having kept county attorney what he says or anything else. If we approve it, they know this is available.
You got to enforce it. If it's any good, if you're going to make it a policy, then it's got to be enforced by somebody. And a lot of these things can't be enforced by anybody but those department heads. And so, but you're stating, okay, this is the way it's going to be. All of this is the way that you will conduct yourselves from now on, even outside of statutes. Well, I just don't agree with everything that's, that's in those policies. I do agree with the statutes, I'll follow the law. And I will ask the county attorney if what I'm following is correct or not. That's, that's why I thought it, Mike, he is our attorney. And he's the one that really understands better than anybody what those laws are stating. Because I've had people come in and say, well, I can do this. And I said, well, we better go talk to the county attorney because I thought the same thing when I read the law. But whenever he says that, no, that's not right, and then you do it and he finds out about it, it's up to him to take you to court if it's a statute. So I, I just, I believe everybody ought to get one.
May I please just make a suggestion? In lieu of a policy like this, could we not do an orientation for newly elected, newly department heads? Because I've been here long enough now to know that county government is an animal all its own.
Yes.
And it changes every single day. And as soon as you implement a policy, the very next week, something changes. And you have to turn around and you have to look at all the new laws. Everything changes in every department, not, not just line, but in all of them. And also I would like to make a point, just to kind of put things in perspective. And this is strictly from my point, from where I am as a department head. Right now, as of this moment, I have four commissioners that I answer to. I have a county judge that I answer to. I have a medical director, I have Dr. Cooper that I have, that I answer to. And I also have a pharmacist in charge that I answer to. Not to mention all of the state reports that I do on a monthly basis. Right now, I'm at seven chiefs and one Indian. And it's getting to the point where I'm going to be doing so much reporting and so much checking in and follow-up that I can't do my job. And I learned the hard way, all of us did it, have been here for a while, we make mistakes. And my concern about something like this, something may be done inadvertently just because we didn't know any better. Something may not come up for five years and a county decides. But whenever it does, I would hate to see someone be terminated for something that was done inadvertently that they did not know. And that's my concern about this policy is this, you know, automatic termination. If we say that you did something wrong, and that's another question that I have, is who makes that determination that I bought the wrong piece of medical equipment? Because there, again, I'm consulting with a doctor and with a pharmacist and I'm making medical decisions, but they're not going to be the ones, they don't have the authority to terminate me. Whereas this would give someone else the ability to terminate me, and that concerns me.
There's no mention of termination in this policy?
Yes, there is.
Yeah, there is.
Well, that is, then that was a inadvertent left in there. Because these came from some of the other counties that adopted that with us. What section was that in?
Six point one one of the credit card purchaser.
Oh, credit card.
It's in there multiple times. I don't think it's ready if we were to do these policies. I don't think it's ready. I would like, if we did go forward with them, I would like to sit down with the county attorney as a court and go through paragraph by paragraph in a special session if we were to look at going through these.
Okay, that's, that's fine. I, I will say that I sent this to y'all three weeks ago.
True.
And nobody came to my office or called me or contacted me with any questions at all.
I'm still looking through them. It's so much, we don't have time to, it'd take, it'd take two days to actually go through and, and, and look at this. One of the things that we've got to remember is newly elected officials are sent to VG Young School, Institute. And are, I, I just came from a class this last week with county purchasing. I, I got all that stuff. I mean, it's not only the first time, you full week and you get all of that stuff right then and there. And then every year you're required, at least county, uh, commissioners, lawyers, judges, you get so many hours of continuing education every year in order to stay in office. And other elected officials are the same way. And we get these kinds of education all the time. Now, the guy that taught this last class was, you know, Houston and my gracious, the things that they have, that they require their people to do is, it's, you have to have two assistants to do it. And, and we don't want to up the taxpayer's cost to be able to follow all this stuff. And, and so it's, it's there. And Angela and, well, all of the, Trish and Tricia.
Thank you.
Sorry about that. They've always kept us up on the, the things that, from their offices, that, that they're required to do to keep us up, to do those things that we need to, just like the credit card. Angela made a form, you fill it out. It's on the statement from the credit card company, you get the receipts. She's got procedures like that, that, that we learn and understand. I'm not against somebody reading these policies, I have no problem with that whatsoever. I think it's good if, for somebody that reads like this. I'm more of a technology person, I'm, I'm going to look it up on, on the internet and I'm going to read it from there. And then when I have questions about something that I'm about to do, I'm going to contact my county attorney and say, and if he's not available, I'm going to contact an attorney at TAC. We've got plenty of them. We also have those that have been in office for years that might know some of these as well. And so we've got a lot of peers that we can work with to make this thing work without being, a lot of this redundant to our personnel policies, ethical issues, for instance. It's in our personnel policies, all right? And, and so I just, I appreciate the effort and, and I'm glad other counties are doing it to some extent. I don't know how, what populations of those counties are. But in a small county, there are things that you can do that without having to a policy that you have to rigidly follow whenever it's not statute.
I disagree.
Well, I, I think that, especially the fixed assets should be given to any new department head or commissioner. Because they don't do what they're supposed to anyway. But other than making this policy, I don't. I would, right away, we would really go through it and see if we want to make it policy out of.
You got it. All you got to do is just Google it. Yeah, I mean, you could approve another dozen policies if you, if you just want to continue to have policies. Personnel policies are pretty important and I'm telling you, I have to look, go back and look at those often, all the time. And not only for myself, but for those guys that work for me.
Well, I, I'm going to pull these because I did not put termination in my policies that I typed. And I want to see where it says, there's formation, I would not ever assume that I have the authority to terminate anybody. I know that I don't, I am an independent office, separate from everybody else.
Sure.
So I don't have that authority and I'm aware of that. So I would not have left that in here on advert, advertently, I guess, I don't know.
Yeah.
But I don't believe that if it's in there, it was not meant to be in there. So I will pull these and we can have a meeting. My, like I said, I sent it three weeks ago, but, I mean, we don't have to do the policy. I was trying to make things where when people come in and say, well, where's the policy? I can say, it's right here. Or what's the statute or whatever it is, I can provide the information. Sometimes there's not statutes on every single things you do, it's a policy or procedure. And I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to run my office.
I don't think you're trying to be difficult either, Angela. I, and I, like I said, I, I don't mind anybody that wants to look at policy in this, in this fashion. I think that's great for them to do that. I think everybody should get them, I think you should hand it to them, especially the fixed assets when they come in to office. But as far as training, we're getting that all the time. We, we are told what is lawful to do, what is not lawful to do. And the, the statute is clear on those things. And for those areas that it isn't, that's why we've got to pick out the attorney or those attorneys at TAC. And it's also on the TAC website and on and on and on. I think we're, if we make it a policy, then people have to follow that policy rigidly.
I think these could be procedure manuals.
I agree.
Not a policy, but procedure manuals that she has to go back to and look at and give them out.
There are people that would eat that up.
And there are people that won't even look at it.
They won't even listen. And they could be in real trouble or not, and it becomes a policy.
As a department head that makes a lot of purchases and a lot of income coming in and going all over the place. I have read these, I've read them three times. There's a lot of point of clarification with them that I need to make so that I understand them clearly. I have not gotten with Angela in the past, whenever they were submitted, simply to use visiting, I'm busy. I have not done my due diligence to schedule time to meet with her. But there are some things in this policy that I would like to sit down and talk to Angela about for point of clarification, to what extent those, those are policy applied to. There's some wording in there that, that I don't even understand that I would like to get clarification on just for me personally, to make sure that I'm following the policy correctly. Whether we need a policy, I'm sure we do, I mean, we're always asking what to do, or I am anyway, I speak for myself, making sure that we're turning in the right documentation. I've been doing it for years, except when trouble material. I saw policies made, definitely needed, or some sort of procedural manual definitely is needed.
I see, procedural manual is great.
But I do, I would like to schedule some time for you all to, just to sit with Angela and get some clarification on for myself of any of my support.
And even if it's procedural, where the court wouldn't even vote on it, you can still go and sort out those things that are there because she can update them to understand what your needs are that are not statute.
Yeah, we, we do have different, different things going on with Angela and I, just because my department's so complex. Yeah, we, we do have different, different things going on with Angela and I, just because of my department's [inaudible].
Okay, so we'll move on from that. You pull those for now and we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead. It's in that the public hearing on designation of a reinvestment zone on approximately 160 acres to be known as scary county camp spring road number one. Reinvestment zone located out on all the northwest four, section number 15 and block three, H and T C. County surveys, scary county tests containing 168 acres. It started 1050. And I know there are questions.
Mr. Chairman. I, I'm Brandon Williams and I have just a few more questions. Uh, first of all, I'd like to say, um, I very much appreciate over the last several weeks, because this has been on the coming agenda. Um, Mr. McCowen, Judge Hicks, thank you guys for just answering my questions and taking time to visit with me about my concerns. This specific reinvestment zone here, um, as I've kind of dug into even the terminologies, um, the, the practices, um, I've not been involved in county government in the past to really dive into these specific scenarios. So some of the questions I may ask in public form may be redundant to public forms before, but they're basically come from my own ignorance. And so I would appreciate your answers to this. Um, my first question on this specific reinvestment zone of 160 acres. To the, the company in question, Crossroads Energy, have they purchased the entirety of that 160 acres? Do we know that?
I think it's a lease.
It's a lease investment.
Yes, sir.
So the entirety of, of the proposed abatement would be, or would cover the entirety of the 160 acre tract? Am I correct in that?
That's true. What it's going to be for, it, it's not the abatement of the land. The value of the land, uh, that's a separate deal altogether. It's the value of the infrastructure they're putting on top of the land. Just like, um, when you look at your appraisal for your house. Your house has one value, your land has another value. So, um, if the land, uh, with one we did not too long ago, uh, went from agricultural to industrial. So the value of the land actually went up.
Certainly.
And, and it, so it's, it's an abate, it would be a pilot program for the infrastructure that's going on top of the land, not the land itself.
That, that question was somewhat to lead into this next one.
Sure.
Their initial investment, my understanding is roughly a 400 foot tall battery storage facility. That, do we know what the percentage of that, of that acreage? That that specific investment is going to, to cover? All of question to that is, in the 160 acres and this abatement potentially being valid for the next 10 years, what other infrastructure is to come over the next decade? Do we know that, um, that would then be covered in the same abatement? Or would it be covered in the same abatement?
Uh, it wouldn't. The one we're talking about would have been, so, so we're being left 400 foot tall.
Lithium battery and that kinetic battery.
This abatement would cover just them two. If they come back with something else and put something else on 80 acres, they would have to come back, put the commission score.
For it to reapply.
It is not a blanket deal.
Okay.
For 10 years.
My, my next set of questions deals with the appraisal value of these. My understanding from, um, their presentation is they are proposing roughly a payment in lieu of roughly $35,000 annualized. Am I, is that correct? As we look at what the potential taxation of that would have been minus an abatement, how is that analysis done on what that value of that is to our current tax rate to, to guarantee that that $30,000 is truly a good deal? By that I mean, throwing pretend numbers out. If we were to, if the valuation of that under our current taxation would generate tax revenue of $200,000, $30,000 being roughly 15% of that, how is that value or that evaluation of data done? Who does it? How is that information presented to the commissioner court for you guys to be able to make this decision?
And I can, after we talked this morning, I, uh, did call Jackie Martin over at appraisal district. She put me in touch with TY Pickett, who does appraisals on oil and gas and, uh, and those. Gentleman I spoke to said that batteries are so new, um, they don't have valuations for them as much. They, uh, so they go off of the cost approach, which depreciates, cost depreciation approach. Um, and so that's what their valuation is off of. The kinetic energy, he said, there's no way to even start with thinking about how to value that right now because it's, it's the first of its kind. They would, uh, value it, uh, 400,000 per megawatt is what he thought. He said, don't hold me to any of these numbers because it's not for sure. It, it's just going to depend, so.
400, $400,000 per megawatt?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Roughly, that, and that's, that's a guesstimate. That's not a for sure. He didn't say that that's for sure. Um, so there's some throughout the state, uh, he said, Pecos just did two pilot programs. Uh, but that, it's not a direct comparison because their batteries, um, also include Bitcoin mining operations. So it's, we don't have Bitcoin mining operation here. So, um, they're so new that they're still trying to figure out a valuation.
And this is exactly what happened in 2004 and '05, whenever Mississippi put in the first wind farm here in Skerrit County. The appraisal district could not figure out a way to appraise them. That's when the county decided to take payment in lieu of, it was like three or four years later before they figured out a way to appraise these people.
So given that, if we were to, from memory, and please don't let me, don't let me say something inaccurate, but from memory, we, this was roughly a six megawatt storage facility.
60.
60, so at $400,000 times 60, is that $24 million? At, at our current tax rate, that $24 million would equate to what valuation that should be paid in the annualized tax? To make that comparison to the $30,000 of payment in lieu. Where I'm going with all of that is, I think it's valid and important that we understand that because there's a lot of, if, if I'm right, and it's $200,000 annualized tax or $30,000, there's a lot of negotiation room in that. I understand from the presentation, the benefits to the organization of Cross, Cross Trails, from a marketing to their investors, uh, we can guarantee your, your liabilities with a payment in lieu. But there's a lot of, there's a lot of wiggle room there from, to go at that from a negotiation to truly benefit the county. I know that our commissioners, uh, have, have been vocal about the problems that we have certainly on the eastern side of the county with the increased oil and gas traffic, the burden and the difficulty of maintaining our, our infrastructure. If we leave money on the table, are we doing a service to our residents? I appreciate y'all's time.
Absolutely, thank you, Brandon. And he, uh, he also mentioned that he spoke to a gentleman who is an agent that gets involved in abatements. And, uh, the companies try to get the total tax for 10 years. So it's, it's, they try to, when they set up these pilots, they try to get pretty close to that. He's also mentioned that, uh, there's a 10% depreciation that they figure into that. So it'll start at 200,000, but it depreciates so much. Uh, and it goes from 100 to, uh, I think he said 90, 80. It depreciation drops over 10 years. And they mentioned that as well, is that the, the depreciation on the value goes down significantly over 10 years. So, uh, but thank you, Brandon.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Morgan, and, and thank you for taking my questions. And so I know from my understanding, there's four jobs that are being created. Do we know if those are Skerrit County based jobs? Are they overseas, like a computer type of job? Do we know that? And do we know if there's like a guarantee for the longevity of the jobs? Or is this just a install job and then, that, you know, it's out and it's down to one or two people that maintain? Do we know?
Absolutely. The install is going to take a whole lot more than four jobs.
Sure.
Uh, the, the four jobs they talked about are going to be permanent locally, local jobs.
Okay. And so is there a guarantee of like, I guess, like within the 10-year abatement period, I guess, is the question? Are those four jobs guaranteed at least in that period? Do we know that?
I don't know. And that's something I can definitely ask and we can have an answer for the next one.
I just know because that was part of like the reasoning, right? To give them the, the abatement is because of the jobs. So we just want to make sure, you know.
Yes, ma'am.
That that's why. Um, another question is, do we know, have we talked about what happens if the project isn't successful? So are they going to be able to, um, you know, just bankrupt out this company? And, you know, the county doesn't get, you know, what they are supposed to receive from them if something doesn't happen? You know, what does that look like? And is, is that, are those, um, I guess the abatement money, is that going into escrow for those 10 years? Do we know that?
The money that we were receiving from the taxes?
Yes, sir.
That would go into our general fund?
Is it in escrow account?
I can answer the bankruptcy question.
Our property taxes. Okay, so in figuring out how much we need in property taxes to fund our budgets to do here, that is taken under consideration in figuring those numbers.
The bankruptcy question, the answer is, if they file bankruptcy, we, um, we have a recapture provision that says we can come back and, if, if they fail to meet the terms of our agreement, and even if filed bankruptcy, we can come back and recapture the taxes that were originally owed, whatever they would be set by the appraisal district. We did that with Lorber. Property taxes get preference over other debt. And so when Lorber filed bankruptcy years ago and defaulted on their agreement with the city, the county, the college, we went to bankruptcy court and recouped all the taxes they should have paid while they were in existence in bankruptcy court. So it does take precedent and there is a mechanism in the agreement for us to recoup those funds.
Okay. Well, one last one is just what's the life expectancy of the project? Um, and then is there a plan if for whatever reason it doesn't fail for the removal and the restoration of the land?
That's a good question.
It was 25 years, wasn't it?
Yes, sir. It wa, it was 25 years. And that's a question of what happens at the end of the life of the, uh, that I haven't gotten an answer to, that I intend to get an answer to and I will have at the next public hearing.
Okay, sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm sure it's going to be the same as it was with the wind turbines. They guaranteed us that they would put the land back like it was prior to.
Yeah.
Doing the deal of those turbines and it's done. And that was a, that was a lot of concerns about that folks had.
Judge, commissioners, we just, uh, going through the turbine tear down out east of town and we're a long way from being restored back to where the land was before they were built. And the footprint they left when they tore them down is two to three times as large as the footprint of building. Plus, because of the way they tore down the structures, we got fiberglass all over a pasture that I don't know we'll ever get rid of. And, uh, and it'll probably be two to three years before we have any grass in the 30 acres that they destroyed out there. And, uh, and they, they've actually never even offered any compensation for any of that, but, uh.
Have you been in contact with them?
Yes, we have.
Okay. And their reply was?
Well, when we asked for things, we asked for like, we wanted a soil sample. They said, you bet we'll get that to you. Hadn't seen it. And, uh, so anyway, we've, we've not been very happy with the tear down process. And the agreement does say that it'll be restored back to the land's original condition. But when they're gone, it's a little bit hard to get them back. And those jobs were not local jobs. They brought those companies in from Alabama and Georgia and, and places like that.
For the, for the tear down.
For the tear down, yes, sir.
Well, uh, iron metal was out there and did do, uh, recruit ball metal.
But most, most, most of the labor was, uh.
Yeah, it was out.
Out, out of county. And there's still a lot of metal in the ground out there too. It, uh, and, and it was too, we go back in there and look in some of the holes that were made and see what they buried. You know, we just, uh, you know, I said, we got that to put up with the rest of our life. And the problem with these projects, like there's no zoning in the counties. So that, you know, these structures can come in and just, they can do whatever they want to. And, uh, it's, for people that have adjoining property, like out there was a 480-foot tall structure that's the size of the wing of Las Vegas Hotel. You know, from pre-time, pre-part of the time, late in the afternoon, we wouldn't have any, any sun on the grass out there. And then like McWheat, like the Williams, they said, they've seen their last sunset from there. So that, you know, those are part of the problems that these companies, not only they have to deal with y'all, you know, there, there's an obligation to deal with the local landowners too, in my opinion. But it's, it's not, uh, that is new. And they're, they're supplying four jobs, literally no taxes. I know, I know a lot of companies that have been here through the years, they don't get anything. They supply a whole lot more jobs than that. And it's just, uh, that's, to me, that's not the intent of economic development in, in abatements. And I know in Dallas, when Cabela's was going up, put in a store in Dallas, the state said, we'll give you $300 a job. And they said, okay, we're going to have 300 jobs. Well, they ended up having 50 jobs. So the state paid 300 times 50, not 300 times 300. So, you know, and, and when you have, when you have taxes, local taxes that have to support these industries and they don't do anything back to the community in return, you know, you don't see them sponsoring basketball teams or Little League or anything like that. It's, you know, that's a, that's an issue that, will our county be better off with them or without them?
I'm not sure about this particular one, what will happen in the, in the future. But I contest to the fact that in the past, they have been very community minded. $250,000 to the college, $250,000 to my precinct for roads. Uh, million, 1.1 million dollars from this previous, uh, farm that they wrote me a check for, for my road.
But Emile, that's, that's not Emile that was out there.
Oh, no, no, I, I'm not saying it is. I'm just saying that that's what occurred. They, they paid for a, this equipment out there in, in Eldred, uh, for a, uh, road patching piece of equipment.
They carry?
They gave it to the county.
Well, they, they hadn't been very good to the landowners, I know that.
And, and I, I, you know, I don't, I haven't seen your contracts. And so I'm sure y'all had attorneys to look through your contracts and, and so your contract is what determines what they're going to do because that's with y'all as far as them returning the land back to its original state. And, well, I visited with them, they called me and they said, I said, how deep are you going to take the concrete down? And they said 18 inches. And I said, no, there's no grass on earth that'll grow on that spot. 18 inches? Some of the grass that we have here goes down 10, 15 foot. And so, but I was hoping that the landowners would hold them, and like I said, I hadn't seen your contract. And so I don't know what was in there whenever, you know, y'all did.
The contract says that they'll restore it to its original condition.
Well, that's, that'd take it down 40 feet in, in some, in some cases.
But it's, uh, you know, I mean, they, they take it down to four. And, uh, but, but anyway, there's, there's still lots of brine and stuff left out there and they wind rubbed it stuff. And, you know, it's, it's not, not very good. So, so anyway, that's, that's just our experience with Emile and, and what a company starts to leave an area that's come in, they hadn't, you know, they hadn't really paid any taxes or anything for what, what their value is. Because I know a lot of people that own apartments, they pay tax based on their, their income they generate. And so, you know, I mean, I, I know the appraisers, there's, there's a way to establish taxable value. So, anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'm, I am sorry that they made a mess like that and I would certainly hold their feet to the fire if I was you.
We will.
They, they need to, yeah. That is not right.
I don't have a lot to do, but try to make them as reasonable as I can.
And I told them that four feet would be minimum. And I didn't know what you guys had suggested, but my gracious. You, you've got 40 foot of concrete width and, and it's going to grow grass?
30, 30 foot.
Yeah, oh, I know. 40 foot in some cases. Now, these out here that, that they just built, they're, they're deeper than that. Yeah, they're way down. Of course, what you've got there is a, a. Of course, what you've got there is a cylinder. It's not solid cement down that deep. It is, it's down that deep, but it's about, I think it was eight foot that they, that they went with. They put a culvert within a culvert and then poured cement in between that. I was...
I watched this one.
On, on the NL.
Correct.
I watched them.
Yeah, me, too.
They put a cylinder within a cylinder.
It was a culvert, a thirty, it was a fifteen-foot-wide culvert, thirty-foot-long thing.
But they put one inside of it, too. And then poured in between it. Okay.
I've got pictures of that one.
Okay. You're saying they poured it solid, fifteen foot?
With, with the metal. When they, they had their metal in place with the cement.
Yeah, so the culvert was inserted in the hole. And then you're saying that they poured it solid cement all the way up? Not, not just a, not just a circle? They didn't pour it, they didn't have a cylinder within a cylinder and then pour in between the circle? Okay.
You want? Yes, sir.
Commissioners, my name is Clint Walker. I have some property to the north of the proposed site. And been there since, I don't know, 2002. And watched the development of the wind turbines. And be quite honest with you, I'm not a big fan of them. So I, and the noise, one of the questions I'm going to ask you is, what kind of noise level will this? I don't even know anything about this battery, though. What, is it going to make a bunch of racket?
I understand that, yeah. It's a good question. It's not something that I asked them yet. I'm a lithium ion. I haven't stopped. There's one on 37th Street that's the lithium ion. I, I don't know, I haven't stopped to see what kind of noise is there. As far as the kinetic energy, that's a very good question that we need to ask and get answered.
Well, I would never be someone that would tell someone else what to do with their property. I think that's property rights in the state of Texas is something that is sacred. But, you know, if it's impeding somebody else's lifestyle or, you know, let's get it. I think the southern, my southern view got a lot better when all those turbines went to the ground. And, but just knowing the sound that the turbines make, it's, to me, it's very, very entertaining. The other thing I would, I was wanting to ask is, you know, how these abatements, how do you qualify for them? Because I started my business here in 1999. And we grew that business and been very successful. Eventually sold it to Conery Services. And we operate two properties here in town, have over a hundred employees. And been in it since 1999. We plan to continue to grow. And we pay our taxes, we pay road fees, permit fees. One of the things I've talked to the governor about and to Representative Craddock about is time to get those permit fees, road fees to the place where they're actually permitted. So those go directly to where those roads are being used. And it gets sucked into that general fund and we never see it. Anyway, that's one of the questions I wanted to ask. And then the other, the last question, and I'll be quiet. And that is, now, is this a private equity bank project?
It is, it'd be investors, yes, sir. So, but it may not, yeah, it's, it's...
Well, know what you're dealing with.
As far as qualifying, do you remember off the top of your head one?
Some, the easiest answer is, those are on the website. I think we've got our tax payment guidelines and criteria on the website. And the last page for new modernization improvements, et cetera. There's a sliding scale there of either investments or number of new employees. And can tell you what abatement you qualify for, but that is on the website. So anybody that's modernizing, making improvements, et cetera, may qualify. Except to go look on that, at the scale and see if you do.
Is that answered?
And I, we need to copy before we record this, but remind you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you all for allowing us to speak here. I spoke to Mr. McCowen and Judge Hicks about this. And I, I just like, mostly taking consideration and seeing, know who you're dealing with, slow down, and all I could suggest is, we've got a, on the turn, they're coming, bringing the first new cool thing to Scory County that we can say. But does it really benefit the community that much? Just to take the time to look into that. And like I expressed, took me about ten minutes to call. They need a substation to plug into that can handle this. They want to get this onboard as quick as they can. They have to file this through the PUC. If they weren't tying in direct to get that into the transmission line, guys, y'all are in the driver's seat to hold their feet to the fire here to help these landowners or anyone else get the best deal we possibly can. And that's all I ask. This is a perfect time to deal with, you're creating four jobs. And that's, I know it's new and everybody wants to get excited about it. But let's look at the long-term in this and what it really creates for Scory County as a whole.
Thank you. Any other comments? Thank you, everybody. Sure do appreciate all the comments and thoughts and input. Close at eleven eighteen. Court, to discuss and consider designating all Northwest Quarter Section Number Fifteen and Block Three H T C surveys, Scory County, Texas, containing one hundred and sixty acres, more or less as a reinvestment zone. Yeah. And that's why, you know, we have the two public hearings and the processes.
I can tell you, I've been dissing with Brown County over the years. And that's Brownland. And they've had a substation for several many years. And they never would give an abatement. And we've had, since 2004, we've had these wind towers built out, batteries coming in. It's now two solar, different solar projects, talking about this new battery with kinetic energy. And they are just now getting a solar company to come in and put in solar. So that's about eighteen years. A lot of our landowners have benefited, our college benefited, our roads have benefited. The amount of traffic that you see here from people that are maintaining those, the amount of fuel, amount of food, the amount of motels. There is no telling the millions of dollars that we've brought in. Not only to landowners, but also to our community. And as far as the substation goes, am I missing something? Don't they still have the same substation they had prior with those wind turbines? I think they're using the same substation and the same power line, you know, underground that they had before. And are, are you saying that they...
No, sir, that's, that's the point I'm trying to make. They want, they want this in production this year, correct, or as soon as possible. Okay, the substation I'm working on right now, the transformers were two years out. In turn, y'all are in the well in the driver's seat in this. And they're going to have to go up for bids to build a substation. Cost anywhere from just a simple phone call, a big country, to provide that kind of wattage was two and a half to four million dollars. So we know they're going to spend that kind of money. We know the waiting time. There's just so many factors in that that we've got on right where we want them. If we want to play those cards, it's a business deal for the county. That's all I'm asking, that it's looked at and not...
So you are going to build a substation if they get it?
No, there, there's a substation there. That they're one that tie, that they're able to tie in.
Okay.
I mean, you have to go through the whole Public Utility Commission to get it tied into a transmission line that's already in place for them. They've got a golden ticket to this finish line right here, guys. And y'all are the only ones in between them.
Yeah.
They, they can't go anywhere. This isn't a situation like y'all mentioned before. Borden County's going to take it, Howard, Jones, anybody, Fisher.
Yeah.
This is a perfect opportunity right there for them, for that facility. It's ideal. I mean, it, it doesn't pit them any better.
Yeah, I got you. Maybe this is the time.
Maybe. That's, that's what I'm thinking. Because I don't know what was at issue with tax payments. Or was that? And by the same token, it was, it's not free money for the county, but in a sense it is because one of these wind turbines are bad or stored sets, they're taxed, takes no dog. But that land they're sitting on is still taxed like it was, whether it's pasture, nobody, no matter what. And, you know, I, I do understand that. But... So, we got to try, because they're getting by with not by who, but merely. I just think it was because this kinetic energy deal, I'd be upset. I would be extremely upset, but I didn't have sunset in my house. And it's, it's something else, right, we're already in different.
We talking about Dwyer's? That is their property, right?
I'm talking about anybody.
But they, they would have to be the ones that sign the lease if they weren't, weren't going to see no sunset.
Well, but my point is, if it's on somebody else.
It's buying somebody else if you have to end the land.
Well, Mr. Holt's a perfect example. He's just due east of there, saying what impede his views with.
Now, he's, he's, are you saying that, Mr. Holt? That it would impede your vis, your vision?
Sure.
Of the sunset?
Four hundred and eighty feet tall.
Four twenty.
We don't know that.
We said four eighty in the paper, but...
Okay.
Four hundred feet sitting on top of a hill, that's a...
Yeah, shuts our sun off at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Judge Hicks, may, if we were, those are absolutely emotional things for the landowners there. That truly they are and, and absolutely need to be taken into consideration by the commission as constituents of yours. If... Correct me if I'm wrong, but to, to the point that I made at the very beginning, can you, has that, can you tell me the number today? If that, using those assumptions of $24 million, using the, the numbers given to you by your contact, is $30,000 a good financial decision for the county? Or factoring in depreciation? As we've said that today, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but that math has not been done. If, if any action is taken without doing that, it's ill-informed. And as a constituent, it's inappropriate and unresponsible. I'm asking you to do the math before you move in any direction. Because, again, a motion is a motion, but numbers aren't going to lie to you either. So if your intention in your, as a voting member of this commission is to move forward, then for p'sakes, get the best financial deal. If you're voting yes, get the best deal. If you're voting no, please listen in to these constituents.
If we don't, there's a, there's a reinvestment zone. Next they know it. We can go to the patient, but they want to. I think so, I'm fine with that.
Six more? This is the most people that we've ever had come to us to and even talk to us about this. And we've always tried to make good financial decisions. And we've always tried to treat the next group of people that came in in a similar manner. We've added to that by adding a four percent inflation rate over the year. We added it to this last one with the solar group. This is a totally new deal. And I don't think you're going to get exact numbers, because they don't know how to appraise this particular property. But if you're ready to try to see if they'll come if you don't give them an abatement...
To, to be fair, that, that, that's not what I said.
Oh, no, I wasn't speaking, but the other, some of the others say it this time, yeah.
If, I'm asking you to go into negotiations for the best possible deal. And I'm also going to take the guidance of Judge Hicks, as was said this morning. You guys have professional counsel to, to inquire with, who gave rough estimates that were presented here this morning. Unless you have any reason to believe that those are inadequate or inaccurate numbers, which I don't think that you do, but unless you do, move forward with those numbers. But do the math.
Judge, one of the questions that, the company that's out there on us, they should have taken those blades off those turbines two years before they did. And that was a statement made by their own people.
That is true.
And then when they filled those turbines with those plates in place, they were just saving crane money.
Yes, that's exactly.
But they made a, they don't know if it saved them any money or not.
Right, yeah.
But it's, yeah.
And they saved them in the end. And did a clean for a mess.
Court, are you aware that they're fixing to take down another 147 turbines in the scheme?
Yes. But they're going to repower.
Not according to what I've heard.
I mean, which, which budget?
The ones out at Flannan.
Oh, no, I've talked to Shell several times. They are putting up, unless they now change their mind, because they told me the other day that we're going forward with five megawatt, four and a half to five megawatt. They're taking down the towers that were there because that location is too small for the amount of megawatts that they're going to put back. If they've changed their mind, I haven't heard that. So I will check with them.
Another question, did they get another abatement for that same company when they put up new towers?
That would, they would, they would have to apply for it, yeah. So I think we can create the investment zone and then negotiate further. I, I didn't, hasn't there already been some negotiation to pay? Requested eighty percent, got ninety. So they're paying a percent of the maximum percent. You can't win. I mean, you can do that or tell them, take it or leave it, whichever. I mean, we've got the power to do that for sure. The other entities may give them a hack to make enough, even if we don't. Have y'all been to the school, the county hospital, I mean, the district, the hospital district or the college?
Do they have public hearings on this?
They will.
This is about...
They will.
But they can't grant a tax break unless you do reinvestment zone. They don't have the authority to grant a reinvestment zone, so...
So who's going to...
Yeah, it's the county or the city are the only two, as I understand it, that have the ability to designate reinvestment zones.
Well, do we want to kill their ability to do?
Yeah, yeah, why not?
Not really. But that is, like I said, I don't want to kill their ability to do that. But I hope so. I'm ready to see what they're willing to
Judge Hicks, may I ask a question for my ignorance again? Um, may an abatement happen without a reinvestment zone?
No.
Now that's what I have to
If that's what you're just to
No, you can't, you can't have one without a reinvestment zone or an enterprise zone.
No.
And the hospital and the college, both of them as well. So if we don't, if the investment zone, they would not have the ability.
So there is no negotiation without an investment zone?
Yes. That's an automatic no from us. We're not gonna do it. And for the other test.
Judge, that make a motion that we create the investment zone and then negotiate. Did he depart? Negotiate, sign pardon.
Yeah, but issue this.
Reinvestment.
Right, this.
And we have time. Yeah. Is that out of June?
Do you think we'd be up less than a hundred percent?
Sure. Okay.
All right, so, motion second.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Judge, I didn't hear, did you say, don't let my
We are, we are, okay.
Yes, sir.
Did I have a proposed order or something? I'll just come back here.
Okay.
All right, Court, consider a refund check from Southern Health Partners Incorporated, the E A S H P Business Health Management Incorporated for accounting some
I'm very gifts.
Ah, we like gifts. We do.
Hi, good morning. My name is Anita Taylor. I'm the county manager for Southern Health Partners. It's my honor and privilege to be here today to present um, this costful refund check in the amount of eighteen thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. Um, this check was partially made possible through S H, S H P's excellent cost savings programs and discounts. Our corporate office works hard every day making sure every county dollar counts and without unnecessary expenditures. Uh, I'd also give credit to our mayor, Sheila Stanley, who is not here unfortunately. Um, and our amazing sheriff, and his staff at the Scory County Jail. Uh, without their efforts to minimize costs at the site level, this would not be possible either. Um, to summarize, thank you for continuing to partner with Southern Health Partners and we look forward to many years to serve this county.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Great.
Thank you. All in favor? Court, to discuss and consider implementing a burn ban for Scory County, Gary Walkman.
I have been deputy. I am now a deputy fireman.
All right.
He wanted me to relate to you that the whole county did not get ran.
Okay.
However, he said if you wanted to wait a couple of weeks before you looked at a burn ban, again, he had no issues with that. Let's suppose get some things burned.
Right.
Everybody be careful, be safe, because there are still, are still some dry spots. And with that, I'll submit my bill for deputy.
Say we take no action for no action for now.
Would agree. Would attend to the person.
Yes. And it blocks it.
All right, Court, to discuss and consider contract, no, for the health unit within a contract, I'm like
Yes.
For the
That's our pharmacist in charge. But it is, Mike has been with us for a while now and he is such an asset.
Yeah.
He really is. He is such an asset to this county that people don't realize a lot of the things he does behind the scenes.
Yes.
And we spend a lot of time in con- contact with him. And we really appreciate everything that he's done for us. So it's just, it's time to renew again and we're not going to let him go. So we hope y'all are on board.
Thank you. All in favor? Court, to consider approval of glide out of transfers, any question, and then
There's one, uh, line of interest for the golf course and cost of irrigation lines, ten thousand, seven ninety-seven fifty, other capital expenditures.
Okay.
And that's it.
That's it.
We're gonna first leave. Ten line of
That's off the budget?
Okay. Did we approve the last?
How bad accounts payable?
Accounts payable is one million, four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, five ninety-two, seventy-nine.
Thank you. Yes, stay out. I'll contact them as well.
None of the floods over.